Alrighty, folks. It looks like we're a couple of ticks past six, but let's get started. But again, this is the new normal, I guess, is this is sort of semi-in-person and semi-virtual. So here we go. So anybody listening at home, bear with us. All right, this meeting is now called to order. This is the City Council Works. There's also an agenda in Spanish on our website. A roll call, please, Sue.
I'm gonna try and do this if we get feedback. My apologies. It's our first hybrid meeting. Yes. Okay, Councillor McBride.
Here.
Councillor Jornel Holloman.
Oh my God.
Thank you. Councillor Martinez Plancarte, here. Remember to key your mics, folks, so that the public can hear. Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Councillor Bacon.
Here.
Councillor Finley.
Here.
Mr. Mayor and Councillor Cofield is not here tonight by prior announcement.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, the council agenda and meeting, anything for this evening, folks? All right, hearing none, none of our call-in viewers, no? All right. All right, council business items, any items you would like to bring up? I've got a couple, but I'm hoping we'll do them after the presentation, if that might be all right. So I think we're told that the presentation will not be too long tonight, so then we'll go hopefully to the city manager's report, and then we'll talk about Councillor Cofield, if that works for you all. All right, given that, let's move on to the presentations. The Historic Preservation Commission five-year work program of activities. Mr. Rux.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. Sorry I couldn't be there this evening, queuing up the mic, but I'm here, virtual land. So over the calendar year of 2021, we spent time with the Historic Preservation Commission to develop a five-year work program. So this is somewhat similar to what we did with the Affordable Housing Commission. So instead of being reactionary in nature, it is, what do we want to accomplish? So they held four meetings over the course of that year. They had some very lively discussions about what they would like to try to accomplish in the world of historic preservation for the community. And in the end, they came up with six topic items that they would like to focus on over that five-year period. So the first and foremost is the university. So George Fox received a grant, and they're working on a mapping our history project, and this is for the downtown area. I have participated. They did a national kind of webinar that they invited me to. Unfortunately, the program got delayed by a year because of COVID. And so they're moving forward with that, and so the commission thought our top priority, because it's a short timeline, and this project's supposed to be done by the end of June of 2022, is to continue to coordinate with the university on their program. And that program will be looking at history from all the archives that George Fox has, information that the city has made available as well. And then they're looking at trying to have a Google app, so that visitors that are coming to town can be able to Google and find different historic resources in and around the downtown area. The commission has spent the last several years talking about the possibility of creating a historic district in the downtown area. And that would be a national register historic district. And we've had conversations with state parks about the possibilities to do that, what might be involved. One of our consultants we had on a past project provided us with an alternative, which is a displaced type of historic district, and that would be based upon time horizons. So think of the library, city hall, and the post office. We're kind of built in that same genre. And so with the commission, they thought, well, it's going to take several years, a number of years, to try to get through this. So the first opportunity would be to try to find grant funds to do some community outreach and education with property owners and business owners in the downtown area. I know there are some concerns by property owners if you create a historic district, it's further regulations on my property, but it all depends upon how you structure a program. They can be relatively loosely structured, or they can be relatively rigidly structured. And then coordination with the downtown coalition. So as our Main Street program in Newburgh is working with Polly and her board and her members about opportunities in the downtown. And recently I passed on to Polly, there was another grant opportunity that came up to do some building facade restorations, and so that will kind of also play into number six. It's been since 1990 that the city has updated his historic inventory. So there is a statewide program under the land use system of goal five. So any structures that are over 50 years in age could be eligible to be listed at the local level as an historic resource. And so the commission identified that would be something to look at over the next five years of updating that. Irony of it is, today actually received a communication from a local resident just north of the immediate downtown area who was interested in getting their property on the local registry as an historic resource. So we're working with that individual. The next piece that they identified was coordination with our tourism activities. And so as we have tourists who are coming in and around downtown, visiting our boutique shops and our restaurants and our tasting rooms and so forth, is coordinating with Taste Newburgh on marketing opportunities to make people who are coming into our downtown area aware of the historic resources that they may be walking by, but don't even know. Think about, well, we all know about the Cameo Theater, and we worked to get that on the national register, but the Union Block, and there are many other buildings. Chapters is another one in the downtown area, and trying to continue to promote that. And that last one on their top six was the Building Facade and Restoration Program. And so there are opportunities through the state to get grant funds, usually matching funds between a property owner and state funds that are available. And so we've done a couple of those already. The Second Street Church on First was one, kind of Diamonds in the Rough, and Chapters was another one of those programs. And so again, I shared with Polly Peterson at the Downtown Coalition that there's another grant opportunity that's there, and we'll do some, try to do some outreach and find out if there's a property owner who might be looking to do some restoration. I think Tom Tesmer and Terry Emery, of course, you know, when they did their restoration, there was no grant funds involved with that, but they did bring the life of the old Darby's back to focus again, that had been covered up for many, many, many years. In addition to that, the commission looked at and identified 13 other things that were not their top priorities within the next six years. But as we all know, opportunities arise. And when opportunities do arise, you need to be able to respond to that. So we did capture those. I won't go through those 13 in any kind of detail or not. But one of the things that keeps coming up is about signage. Signage to help visitors be able to recognize an historic resource that exists within the community, be it within the downtown or outside of the downtown area. We've had some conversations with the millsite owner about the opportunity to reserve some space for a sign that could tell the history of the millsite back from Spalding all the way up through the West Rock Purchase, because that is a very important part of Newburgh's history. And so we will continue to do that. Unfortunately, we are not able to use certified local government funds, which the city has been designated as a certified local government by State Parks. But there would be opportunities for the commission and the Newburgh Area Historical Society to do some fundraising, or maybe apply for some other grants outside of the state program to be able to do some signage. I mentioned on the university's program of mapping our history about the Google app, and it keeps coming up about a Google app to be able to help people who are walking around town with their smartphones to be able to recognize historic resources that exist within the community. We will continue to provide opportunities and notification to the commission about trainings, because again, we are certified local government, and so there are trainings that occur every year. And then I'll think I'll stop with the last one is more of the wayfinding. And so Will is aware of this, so the cultural district has a whole program, you know, try to do wayfinding, but we've also had conversations about expanding that beyond just the cultural district, but to the entire downtown to help people orient themselves to go to different shops, businesses, historic resources, and so forth, to help our visitors and our residents recognize the history that does exist within the city of Newburgh. So this is not a program that's asking for your official blessing, but it is one to let you know that your historic commission has diligently worked over the course of the last year to try to be proactive and look forward or forward-thinking of what they want to try to accomplish. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I will stop and see if there are any questions.
Any questions, folks? What about Elise or Denise? I guess just one question, Doug, and I don't think this is the purview of the Preservation Commission, but was there any talk of the historic home tour that used to go on a few years back?
There was not. That was more of a function of the Historical Society.
Thank you. All right, anything else, folks? All right, well, Doug, thank you so much, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, and we will keep working forward on preserving the history of Newburgh.
All right, well, thank you, thank you. All right, let's move on if you don't mind. Will, how's about the city manager's report?
I'm waiting for something fabulous to come up on the screen.
I must give Doug credit. He said 15 minutes. I was pretty much 15 minutes on the head. Nailed it.
I follow through, Mr. Mayor, with my commitment.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councillors. So this is our first hybrid meeting, as you know, and so we're going to have to struggle with a Scottish accent combined with a mask this evening. But I have been diligently explained to me by Sue to stay close to the mic, so I will be doing that. Next slide, please. So first of all, we'll start with public works items. Work on the extension for water and sewer on the portion of North Shehalem Drive near Highway 240 is progressing more slowly than we thought it would. Our team has discovered some grade and location conflicts with northwest Newburgh Water District lines and pipe vulnerabilities. My understanding is this might be pipes that were not in exactly the location they should have been, or pipes that were in poorer condition than they thought they would find. We're having to make some modifications to keep that going, and we're on it. Next slide, please. The wastewater treatment administration remodel has been completed. And you remember I explained last time that it was in its closing phases. That's finished, and the new Sawdust Bay covering structure is in its last stages of being completed. Purchase of additional land adjacent to the water treatment plant for future construction of our dreamed-of fabulous new treatment facility has occurred, and we're planning to move along with that as soon as redundant water supply rights become available. And you know, we're working on that, too. Next slide, please. Maintenance projects are continuing, including well number five, which, as you know, has had maintenance work in the past, and the replacement of a leaking sodium hypochlorate tank with some associated disinfection equipment that was necessary also. Continued projects for the reduction of inflow and infiltration into the wastewater system have demonstrated an ongoing reduction in influent flows into the wastewater system. And as you know, in a perfect world, there would be very little difference between the amount of water produced and the amount that's processed as wastewater. And the difference between the two demonstrates how much is seeping into the system. And if you look at our numbers year over year for the last five years, they've been getting steadily better. New slide, please. And I just wanted to throw out this picture. This is the big tree hoist happening just before the Christmas holidays, and here's the team lifting it up into place. New slide, please. The maintenance division is wrapping up the leaf season, and normal street sweeping is underway again. Our planning, training, and preparations to address the winter weather were put to the test, as you know. And as I walked down to work every day, I could see the Public Works crews out scraping up ice and snow very effectively. So that was very heartening. New slide, please. Our staff have also been notifying people and beginning their trimming program for any trees and bushes that have been out in the public right of way that might be a hazard either to vehicles or for other safety reasons. And the next few slides have a few more quick takeaways from public works items for the current period. The solar farm project has been completed. The advanced metering infrastructure project has almost been completed. So that's the remote reading of all of our meters to do away with a bunch of manual work. The American Water Infrastructure Act is an effort mandated by the federal government to analyze and document our water system risks and resiliences. And phase one of that has been completed. New slide, please. The Bell West Water Pump Station is underway. The project will install a new water pump station near the intersection of North College Street and Bell Road, and that will replace undersized and ineffective equipment. North College Street water line relocation is in final design, and this project is being constructed prior to the North College Street sidewalk and bike lane projects. This is one of these classic things where if you can do the two things in parallel, you save money. New slide, please. The ADA transition plan work has started with help from the city recorder's office, thank you, Sue. Recruiting for stakeholders is underway. And the pavement maintenance projects are underway. Maintenance project number one, North Street and Sixth Street, was awarded on 9/7, and work has begun. Maintenance project two was put out to bid with work to be complete in the spring of 2022. New slide, please. And although it's very hard to read, you can see here are grinds, crack seals, and slurry work that are happening on select stretches of road, as highlighted in that diagram. New slide, please. Our city recorder's office has been very busy with a myriad of projects as usual, but I wanted to draw your attention to the city webpage on legislative redistricting. We now have a link embedded that our consultant set up with the different map alternatives. Residents can go to this link, and I've put a tiny version on the screen, and they can see the different versions, and they can add comments dynamically on the page. New slide, please. At the library, December began with 43 youth crafters making and selling their creations to over 400 people attending the kids' craft sale on Saturday, December 4th, from 12:00 p.m. till 6:00 p.m. The event was followed by the community tree lighting and Santa visit, making this a full day of celebration in the cultural district. New slide, please. The library could not be more proud of Audrey Smith, who won two city awards. The city safety award for her hard work keeping the library and staff safe through the pandemic, and also the teamwork award, won in tandem with Audrey Ragsdale from the library. And I had no hand in this, folks. I was not on the committee. And she also received that for helping human resources with her massive project of reorganizing all the personnel files that we started back in November. New slide, please. Library staff pulled together again this month, and actually, this has now happened three times, when the tarp flew off the roof once again, allowing water to actually come into the library down the stairwell, inundating it and forcing us to close the stairwell for a time. We are grateful nobody was harmed by this event. No books or materials were destroyed by the water, and the company doing the glasswork came out repeatedly to put the tarp back despite the storms. They're now telling us it might be just a few more weeks till they can actually do the repair. And this was slowed down by glass shortages, of all things. New slide, please. Oh, and there we go. We're expecting mid-January. And here's the library family place giving tree for this December, which is something, you know, we do at the library every year. New slide, please. This year marks 23 years of children's librarians going to each and every kindergarten classroom to talk about the library, give out free books, and send home library card applications. This personalized visit to kindergarteners is very important to make those early literacy connections right from the very beginning. And it emphasizes our very robust collection of easy readers for kids starting on that literacy journey. New slide, please. And yes, the library is still doing curbside service on Fridays. New slide, please. In economic development, the business deeds survey was completed and summarized to support ARPA funds. This helps prioritize things for local business. The report included a compressed version of the ARPA project application form, and business applicants are receiving direct support from our economic health manager to get those forms returned to us. And you'll see that in the next batch of ARPA fund requests, there are many small businesses in that fold already. Our manager is also serving as a volunteer board member for Catalyst High School students as they design new nonprofit organizations as a CTE career and technical education project. And also, she has been attending the Oregon Leadership Summit. New slide, please. During the month of December, finance was approved by the budget committee to purchase the new citywide finance software with the use of ARPA funds. ENCODE 10, ENCODE 10 by Tyler Corporation, will enable us to replace three other databases within the city to have digital payroll, digital connectivity with other services, and it will also enable us to have real-time analytics on how we spend our money. It's truly revolutionary. The finance team have attended a demonstration of the software, and we were amazed to learn the new features that we will be able to access. As I stated already, this will also save money as it will replace multiple other databases. New slide, please. In community development, Newburgh City Council accepted the second annual community visioning report on December 6th. Land use decisions were issued for Shehalem Valley Middle School, and Tonya Crater Elementary School Design Review, and the Green Plant marijuana dispensary on West First Street. New slide, please. The design review application for Catalyst High School expansion and Newburgh High School Career Technical Education Facility was unfortunately put on hold by the applicant as they are looking at a redesign due to a surprisingly high level of construction costs. The Housing Production Strategy Grant and consultant contracts were finalized. Three new vacation rental applications are currently under review. New slide, please. City Council approved the middle housing regulation package and ODOT and CDC annexations. Consultants for the urban renewal program updated the financial model, and the revised draft legal description was completed. Our Tourism Strategy Update Program conducted a survey ending in December 23rd, and conversations with Escape Lodging are moving forward, and financing packages related to SDCs will be brought before City Council soon. Unfortunately, our associate planner candidate declined the position, so we are still short-staffed, and this is simply because of market forces. New slide, please. The Building Division notified applicants with permits that they're going to expire on their options to pay for and pick up permits, submit a request with supporting documentation that a hardship might exist. This would allow the permit to be extended or let the permit expire and start the process over again. And some of this activity was caught up in the churn of COVID and the front desk being closed for a while, although we've done our best to do workarounds. Clear Company was engaged to assist in conducting single-family reviews to reduce the backlog. So since we're short-staffed, that's a subcontractor. Overall, no budgetary impact, I must add, that will keep us caught up on some of these smaller jobs so that we don't fall behind. New slide, please. Community Engagement spent time working on various projects, creating a polling system and summary information for the December Budget Committee meeting on ARPA. They also updated our warming shelter information. Engagement worked with communications consultants on the annual report. They created a citywide organization chart that Will Worthy designed, and it's gorgeous. It helped with the ADA transition plan and were generally out and about in the community. New slide, please. Our community engagement specialist Ezekiel took photos of the tree lighting, met with Latinx business owners to talk about resources, offered assistance to Spanish-speaking community members looking to participate in TVFNR's Toy and Joy Program, as well as helping them navigate other paperwork such as federal loans and also ARPA submission paperwork. In the coming weeks, we're planning to create an editorial calendar for the year, finishing the city annual report and creating drafts of potential council roundup email newsletter items, all just to put more communication into the community. New slide, please. In the world of public safety, we've started a background review for a potential lateral police officer transfer, and I'm very proud to announce that Nathan James has been promoted to sergeant. We have the final numbers from our annual Shop With A Cop event, and I'm proud to announce that we served 27 families. New slide, please. Amy Kepler was hired to replace Denise Christensen for records and evidence. And as you may know, Denise worked for the city of Newburgh for 26 years and has done an exemplary job for our PD, and we will miss her. New slide, please. And here's a shot of some of that Christmas goodness, partnering with volunteers in the community to deliver approximately 180 meals to our seniors on December 30th. So good work, everybody. New slide, please. Lastly, for public safety, I need to give a huge shout-out to Karen Frekettich, who also won the Strive Teamwork Award. They actually gave it to three people jointly. In fact, I have to confess that Karen was recognized by HR as the staff member who had personally built more record jackets in the new format, even more than either one of the Audreys, although they did make a lot of them, too. New slide, please. This month, the IT department responded rapidly to a global cybersecurity event known as Log for Shell, which involved analyzing every application and service that we have in the city and pushing remediating patches which were vendor-specific as soon as they were released. This is a case where IT companies were using a piece of code that had been reused again and again, and so it had a vulnerability in it. And when this was discovered, we had to check with all of our cloud-based services and get it fixed fast. And as far as we know, we have not been compromised in any way. New slide, please. In addition to this, IT performed a full replacement of the battery modules in the uninterruptible power supply that provides the server room and public safety building with juice. They also upgraded the operating system on 75 thin client computing units. And here's a picture of the one on my desk, so that you can see what those things look like. It's kind of a small virtual computer that just runs off the network. New slide, please. So that's everything for this month. As you can see, the residents' tax dollars have been hard at work as usual, and I would love to take any questions that you may have for me at this time.
Stephanie, go ahead.
Oh, I just, I have two things. One is that thank you to Public Works, because I know I live in a neighborhood where we have a very steep hill, and it's always nice that they have those barricades out the night before so that there's no problem when that happens overnight. And then my next one, I don't expect an answer tonight, and it's really more of a thought than a question. But I love the program where the librarians go into the kindergarten classes. And I'm wondering, because last year was such a weird year for particularly kindergartners not having a traditional kindergarten experience, if maybe there would be an option for that to happen in the first grades? And if not, maybe just getting the information for library cards to first-grade teachers to hand out to their kids and maybe... To first grade teachers to hand out to their kids and maybe. Especially Spanish speaking kids, Spanish speaking literature, because I know a lot of kids missed. Last year, first graders are kind of really kindergartners this year, and I know that because I have a first grader, so. Just wondering if, if maybe we could get that to the first grade classes as well.
I'll talk to Cory, but I bet you that we can make that happen.
Mike.
So thanks, Will, for this report. I have three questions. One. That North Island Drive and Highway two forty, the, the water system that you're replacing, Water District. I thought independent water districts were responsible for their repair of their water lines. Is this one that's. Owned by the city? Because I know there's two that I know of. And that's what the people that live on those, they pay so much a month and they set it aside.
So my understanding of that is that that's true, but it's more where we want to lay some pipes.
Oh, okay.
There's, there's some geometry that they've found, as I understand it, that wasn't what they expected. So it's not.
They're in the way of moving.
Correct, correct, or that, or that, as they call it, the locates. Were not exactly historically correct.
Okay. Another question. On the leaf. You know, picking up the leaves and, and having the, the sweeper go out. Is there, is there a process or? I mean, I, as I drive around, I see people blowing leaves out into the street. Which then when it rains, it goes down, gets in the. I mean, is that legal? Are we supposed to do that or not do that?
Well, I don't think I'd go so far as to say illegal, but it's something that we have been hammering on. Please, if you're listening at home, folks, don't do that. We're always trying to discourage people from doing that, so. We, we always, every year message that along with other things like our tree trimming program. And we're going to keep messaging that because that is not what we would like to happen.
Right. I didn't, I didn't think so, but. Hadn't really heard anything about it, so I was just wondering. And the last question, the Escape Lodging, was that the one that we? Did the, the money, the ARPA money to, to help a while back?
So, no, that's, that's actually a separate contract. That was, came out of our Economic Development Team to look at.
Right.
Hotel tourism because it needed to be refreshed. Now I am going to be working closely to try to. How can I put this? Blend the efforts of Taste Newburgh and this effort to make sure that they work together closely. And, and they can.
I've just forgotten what the Escape Lodging was, so that's why I was asking.
Right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Jules?
Thank you, Will. I have one more question. In terms of like, Ezekiel's work doing outreach to the Latinx businesses. I was wondering if any of the resources are COVID related, whether that's like testing or like. Vaccines, because those are questions that are like popping out a lot, especially since a lot of these events are in McMemville. I know that would be really beneficial for our community to have that.
So that's a really good point, and up till now. Simply because of the ARPA timing and stuff, I know that he has mostly been focusing more on economic issues, business opportunities. But that's something that we can definitely do in the next quarter. Because for one thing, we're about to have another person on staff, a fully qualified Latino librarian, who is also a cataloger. So it's kind of another, yet more left in the community to do that kind of stuff. So I will speak to him about it.
All right, Denise or Elise, any questions for Will?
I'm good.
Okay, all right. All right, well, well, not, not questions, but more just comments, I guess. Glad to hear about the Bell West Pump Station. That's been a long time coming. I think that'll make a number of people happy. Vacation rentals, you and I have talked about vacation rentals. That is something I think we may need to discuss at some later point. And let's see, and then the SDCs and the school district, I'm glad to see that the projects are moving on. As we know, we've got the letter from, from. The school district regarding the fees, so I know we plan to talk about SDCs in greater depth. That's good. And then, of course, congratulations to Sergeant James. That's well deserved. So, so good. All, all around, Will, thank you. Good, good stuff and. I feel, I feel more informed now, and I'm sure those listening will as well, so that I appreciate that greatly. So, thank you.
Thank you kindly, folks, and I get great information from my department heads.
Great, wonderful. All righty, thank you. All right, let's, let's move on. So, you know, as I mentioned, wanted to talk a little bit about Counselor Kofield. So I think he tried to reach out to you all. I don't know if he was able to reach you, but basically he. Sent this email this morning. Good morning, Rick. It is with deep sadness that I write to inform you of my decision to resign as a city councillor. It has been an honor to serve in this capacity, but recent family developments require me to be more present during this season of life. Please extend my love and gratitude to everyone in the city, and I look forward to seeing the good work you all continue to do. Much love, Bryce Kofield. So that's resignation as of today. So which unfortunate, but again, if you, if you know Bryce, between, he's now got a toddler, right? Kyrie, who's three, Ellison, who was just born, his wife Carrie, and then. Bryce himself is, you know, working full time, trying to do his PhD dissertation. And has little children. So there we go. So the best, best to Bryce. What this, what this raises is a question then as to, we've had, we've appointed people to the position before in the past. And Sue was kind enough to give us an idea of what we've done in the past and the options we might have. So again, this is for District Four. So the ideas, the possibilities, and I think if maybe we just get at least a direction from you all, then we don't need to make a decision, but at least what you might like to think about. For a future meeting, so we can leave the position vacant for the remainder of the year. That seat is up in November. Recruit for the position. Recruit for the position but exclude anyone who plans to run for District Four. In the November election or to hold the position vacant until November eighth, and then consider asking the winner candidate to take the office. Earlier than January of twenty twenty two, so they'd start the second November meeting, I think it would be. So. And then, and then Sue, again, was kind enough to, to give us the recent history of appointments on here, so, so thank you for that, Sue. All right, any thoughts on that, folks? Anyone? Any other thing? Did I miss anything, Sue?
Sorry. So what I, the mayor's referring to, you all did not get, it was just sent to Rick. Council President Finley and the city manager and city attorney. So it's a draft staff report for January eighteenth. And. We've been through this before, unfortunately. So really, there is no. The Charter states what takes place, but it doesn't tell you how. And we do not have a resolution that spells out a set process. That can be a blessing and a curse. It's a little frustrating because you're like, what do we do? But it also gives you great flexibility. So I had written that staff report. On the dot, on a dime this afternoon. So I need to go back in and double check my dates and stuff before it's published. And so the question just is, you know, do you want? To declare a vacancy and initiate the process at the next meeting? Do you want to have the chance to think about it and talk about it some more on the eighteenth? Then after you tell staff what you want to do. In the past, traditionally, the method has been to declare the vacancy. And start the process, and that requires a resolution come back to you. But usually we seek. Some feedback first so that you can let us know what direction you want to go. Some of those options have different, they go off different directions, so.
Thank you, Sue. Thanks for the clarification. All right, so why don't we just go around and get an idea of what we think? Mike, why don't you, why don't you start?
I, I think we just let it stay vacant until election this coming November. Go ahead.
I'm open to options, but my preference is that we do the appointment process. I think a year is a really long time to be without that seat. One of the things, because we're a seven person board, is that leaves it open to split votes a lot of times. Which I don't necessarily anticipate, but it's nice to have seven because then we really have a majority vote on those things. And so I think with it being a year, my preference is an appointment, but I, I am open to talking more about it.
Jules.
Similarly to Stephanie, I'm also just because it's still a whole year, and I think giving the opportunity for someone to try it out. And see if it's something that they're interested or they like it. I think we can also get another voice. And then I do have a one question. Would the need to like redistricting lines potentially affect this, or how would that work out?
So, yes. Yeah, it gets complicated. Dead twenty twenty two is supposed to be so easy. So the redistricting is in flow. There are three choices that came before you that are out to the public for comment. We are coming back on January eighteenth for you to give myself and Kim from the COG. A nod on one, two, or three, and then we are to come back February seventh and. And pass an ordinance. And because of timelines, we were looking at. An emergency clause effective upon passage. So depending upon when you would set your recruitment period. Yes, the new map would be, probably be in effect because. If you look at a parallel timeline of a city manager recruitment. We come back January eighteenth, you discuss it some more, you say go with option whatever. Then you're talking at least a month to give people a chance to apply. A month is still a very tight time period. I'd have to look at the record to see what we did last time. I want to say it was more like six weeks. Then you have to interview people, then you have to appoint someone. So yeah, the redistricting would affect where that person would live. What we had originally been concerned about was getting the maps and the new maps in place before the twenty twenty two election season began. Which people can't file for office until after Memorial Day weekend. So this would impact that choice.
Thank you, Jules. Thanks for that. Thank you, Sue. All right, Denise, thoughts?
Yes, I think we should leave the spot open. And in November, invite the person who wins the election to join us. And appoint them then to be a councillor. I think, I think appointing the, the, a person. Could create issues for future elections. Your election, so.
Right. Elise, thoughts?
I could be swayed on either one here. I agree that a year is a long time. I think. City manager, you know, we got to figure that out at some point too. But I do, I could be swayed either way. I don't have super strong feelings on this.
Doesn't have particularly strong feelings either. Well, either way, you know, I think I'm probably that way too. I, my, my only, well. This wrinkle of the new district and rolling that out is, is a bit of a, bit of a sort of a wrinkle in the whole thing. So that gives me a little bit of pause, just I wanted to make twenty twenty two nice for Sue and all, and this isn't helping, so. So, but the only other thing, my only other thing is that. You know, District Four theoretically will go without representation for a year. So that would, that would be my only other concern. And as Jules said, this is a chance for someone to do it, even if they want to do it just for a short period of time. So anyway, so given that, given that we've got a different difference of attention, we bring it back, discuss it again on the eighteenth and then go from there. Does that work? Okay, how's about that, folks? And Denise and Elise, does that work?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Okay, with that, we will be back on the eighteenth. To discuss that in greater detail. All right, anything else, folks? Do you have, let's see, what else do we have? Any council business that you'd like to mention? Anything y'all been up to? We've got a couple minutes. Anybody? Denise or Elise, anything you want to share with us?
No. Not me.
Yeah, I don't know. Where, what have we been up to? Well, here's one thing, there's been some discussion, we had a discussion today, a couple of discussions now on the Butler property across from City Hall. The property next to the post office. So there's some talk about what might happen with that, at least as a, as a temporary thing. And people are talking about making it into some form of a park where people could, you know, have lunch or listen to music or whatever it may be. So that, that's something that's in the offing. And I did, and Mike, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask. Has the post office ever reconsidered, you know, maybe expanding and using that property?
You know, I don't think so. I mean, I know there was talk about trying to do something in relation to them in terms of development. You know, there was a talk about a hotel property there, but that didn't, didn't pan out, so. Even actually in our meeting today, I said, well, you know, I'll go in and talk to. The post office people to see if we could put a mural on the backside of the building because it's brick and then it turns sort of white. And somebody laughingly said, well, that'll take two years to get a decision from the postal service. But anyway, hopefully that's not the case, but. So that's one. The other one, and I think Mike's involved with this too, is that I mentioned this before and it continues to move along. We're trying to do. Sort of a community conversation. To, to try to address the divisiveness in the community, bring people together and try to come to some. Shared values. So we're, that's in process still. There'll be, there's a, a sort of a social event that's planned for the tenth of January. And so that'll get it rolling and then hopefully all of you all will be, obviously be invited and hopefully that'll be a. Be a good event for the community. So it's still in the planning stages, but hopefully it won't be too, too long. From now, you'll hear more. All right. Otherwise, that's about what I got unless anybody's got anything else. All right, let's come back and we'll be back for the business session promptly at seven or in eight minutes. All right, good evening, folks. It's seven o'clock on January third, twenty twenty two, and this is City Council Business Session. This meeting is now called to order. We also have an agenda in Spanish on the website. A roll call, please, Sue.
Counselor McBride?
Here.
Counselor Yurinell Holloman?
Here.
Counselor Martinez Plancarte?
Here.
Mayor Rogers?
Present.
Counselor Bacon?
Here.
Counselor Finley?
Here.
And Mr. Mayor, for the record, as announced earlier this evening, Counselor Kofield has resigned.
All righty, well, thank you. Thank you very much. And again, for those who did not hear that earlier, we wish the very best to, to Bryce. His wife and children, so, and thank you, Bryce, for your, for your service to the community. All right, the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. All right, the next item on our agenda, item four is election of a council president. So as you all know, to my left, Council President Finley has dutifully served for the last period, so. I am open to nominations for this coming year, so. And don't all be shy.
I nominate Elise.
All right, Elise, you have been nominated. Did you hear that?
I hear that.
And Mike, go ahead.
I nominate Denise.
All right, so we've got Elise and Denise. Anyone else? Or none? All right. Would either of you like to say whether you'd be willing to serve or not willing to serve? So I'll start with Elise.
I'm willing to. My husband just said in the background, not, but. I'm willing to, but I would also support Denise to do it as well. So either way, I am. Here are the.
Very good. Denise, what, what say you?
I was gonna nominate Elise myself. I, I've served, I think, six years as the president of the council. And, and I love it. And because I'm so well known, I get to do so much of the same work anyway. People call me from all over to do the work, so I. I. Am going to pass on the opportunity, but thank you, Mike. I appreciate, I appreciate that you nominated me.
All right, Denise, thank you for your graciousness and for your past and continued service. All right, anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll do it.
There you go, go for it.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we. appoint Elise to be our council president.
We have a second?
Second.
And Mike with a second. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Elise, you are the new council president. Congratulations.
Right. I'm excited to work with all of you.
Perfect. All right. We didn't get Lincoln's opinion on it, but I'm sure he's in favor. All right. Okay. For those listening at home, we did have the city managers' report earlier this evening. And the city manager or the city attorney's quarterly report, we're going to push until the eighteenth, as there's some pending items that he'll discuss that we'll discuss on the eighteen. All right. And for the city manager's report, it will be posted, yes, on the website. So if you are looking to find out actually what your city is up to, please check out the city manager's report. It is a wealth of information. All right. Next, item six A. This is the ADA Ad Hoc Committee Appointments. Let me read to you the definite what the ADA Ad Hoc Citizens Committee it will be charged with. To increase the city's effectiveness in serving individuals with disabilities, the city of Newburgh will perform an audit of its policies, practices, and procedures, and identify how those align with best practices. Plan will cover former areas, public rights of way, programs, services, and buildings. The Ad Hoc Committee will work with the city to define standards, conduct, and or assist in an evaluation identifying deficiencies, limiting accessibility, and prioritize projects with a schedule and rough cost estimate to achieve compliance. All right. So before you, I have a number of names that we'd like to appoint to this to this committee. Included are Thomas Rokola, the Student Commissioner, Roy Gathercole, Rebecca Pyros, Andrea Byerly, Krista Miller, Erica Alvarez, Samuel Roder, Karen Arneson, and Timon Towers to the ADA Ad Hoc Committee for a term of January four, twenty twenty-two, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. All right. And if we could have a motion to that effect, folks, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we consent to the aforementioned the appointments of the aforementioned folks to the ADA Ad Hoc Committee for the term of January fourth to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
And a second.
Second.
And Jules with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the appointments pass, and thank you to all who have been appointed. Thank you as well to those who applied but were not appointed. Again, we had a luxury of applicants this time. So again, thank you. If you did apply, don't be surprised if we contact you in the future about another city committee, as we always seem to have ways to involve volunteers. So again, thank you. Thank you very much for that. All right. I think we're at the point where on public comments, and I know that we've got at least one person here. Good evening, Pat.
Hi.
We are ready for you when you are.
Okay. Well, first I want to say hi to Denise Bacon, because I haven't seen her for about ten years. So it's nice to see her still serve in the city.
Hi, Pat. Nice to see you, too.
Yeah, well, I I would like to talk to you about, you know, a few years back, we had Publishers Paper here. And it was two hundred good paying jobs. I know because I worked there. I had a good paying job there. And when they shut down Publishers, it seems to me like there hasn't been any companies come back in to replace that money that was being most of it being spent in this town. And so I just would like to know if you have tried to sell this town to businesses, big businesses, not not Burger Kings or Burger Villes or, you know, you know what I mean? Some jobs that bring in good money for this town. I don't know if you worked on that, if you're if you have a committee that's doing that, advertising our town with the Chamber of Commerce helping us to bring some big paying jobs into this town, because we have twenty-four, twenty-five thousand people living here. And they're they're all, most all of them are having to drive somewhere else to work. And so I just thought I would ask you if there has been any committee or anything done to try to encourage some big business back into Newburgh. Maybe you could give me some thoughts on that.
All right. Well, Pat, we, you know, normally, we don't normally respond to to public comment. But your comment is so intriguing that I'm afraid we're going to have to bend that rule a little bit, because, yes, economic development is a hugely important item for this community. So I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Worthy.
Okay.
Hi, Pat. Sorry about the Scottish accent. You know, it's the only one I've got.
Well, the older I get, the more accent I get.
So I just wanted to relate to you. There are a number of things that we're trying to do. One of the things, of course, is Taste Newburgh. And although that's designed to bring in tourism, we're also trying to popularize this area as a tourist destination, and we're hoping to build another medium-sized hotel, and that will create some jobs. But the biggest thing on the horizon is when we do urban renewal, which, as you know, Doug Rux has been working on for a very long time. And that will develop, I don't know how many hectares of land, much of which will have either some possibilities for light or medium industrial jobs. So that's really the way in which we're going to create some jobs right here, so people don't have to drive to Sherwood or Mac or anywhere else. And we're working on that right now. So expect to see some of those developments coming. And yes, it might be in the five to ten-year timeframe, but we're working on it as hard as we can. Does that help you understand what we're doing, Pat?
For the most part. I just wonder where you're going to put it, because you've covered this town with houses. So where are you going to put it?
Well, a lot of this.
Any big business would come in. Where would you put it?
It's a good it's a good question, Pat. So a lot of this stuff is going to be along the riverfront area. And if you look at some of the previous council packets, you'll be able to see the documents that show the area that will be developed. But also, if you email me or give me a call tomorrow, I will send you one of those diagrams that shows where this medium and light industrial zoning is, and that's going to be the type of jobs that you're talking about.
I guess, because I've lived here for eighty of my eighty-four years, you obviously haven't seen this river flood. I can remember when I was about four years old, standing with my dad and several people from the community at the top of the bridge, the old bridge, and the water, the river had flooded all the way from the top of that bridge all the way to St. Paul. That was several years ago, seventy, eighty years ago. But I I'm really concerned that with all the development on the Willamette River, you know, you I I just don't agree with all the development that you're thinking about down by on the riverfront. You're you're not going to be able to stop that river from flooding. So I I would hope that you would give some really serious thought to what gets put in down there. I guess that's about all. I I don't mean to attack anybody or anything. I just I just sit and look at all the houses where my grandfather farmed from Illinois Street up to Columbia Drive. He had fourteen men farm for him. My grandmother cooked three meals a day on a wood stove for all fourteen men. And he used to sit in his chair at night and tell us how that dirt would grow anything that we were blessed. He'd farmed all over everywhere from Germany all the way to Newburgh. And he said, this dirt is priceless. And now I drive out College Street and get sick to my stomach every night because it's covered with houses. And so I I would hope there'd be a lot of good judgment put into our future in this town, not mine, but everybody else's. There's a lot of great people that have moved here now. They will get involved. But we have to be absolutely transparent and tell them, and I'm not talking just about the Newburgh graphic. Because most of many people don't read Tamplin's newspaper anymore because it's got a lot of news about other towns, not Newburgh. So I I would hope that you would really give some thought to where you're going to put this new businesses, heavy industrial, whatever. Down by the river isn't the place to put it. So at any rate, I appreciate you listening to me, and I I just have thoughts. I'm I feel terrible about the fact there's no place to park in Newburgh. A lot of the businesses have suffered because of that. In fact, most of them do. Even the parking lot on Second Street is full, and business people don't even have place to park. So that's something else that I would hope you would consider for the future. And you mentioned the Butler property, and it's one the only, well, Hoover Park, but it's the only green area in our town. And right now, you got a freeway going on the west, going west, and you got one going through Newburgh, going east. And parking is a lack of parking is really costly for these businesses. And I I've always been an advocate for Newburgh businesses because they're the body and soul of this town. And we we should concentrate on what what's really going to work for them before ourselves, because we will only benefit if they do. So that's all. Thank you for listening. If you have any comments, I would like to hear them. And I appreciate you giving your time for the city of Newburgh. It needs all the help it can get. We got twenty-four thousand people living here now, more moving in all the time. We're going to have to have more school. There's a lot of changes coming in this future of this town. So I'm sure that you guys will do the best you can, and that's what I'm hoping for. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. And just one thing is, if you get a chance, you know, drive by the mill site. It's it's not completely down, but they they've done a whole lot. So that really, that hundred and eighty acres will be the destination for what we hope will be family wage jobs. But your point at the onset that we lost two hundred jobs, well-paying jobs, we absolutely need to replace. We need to find a way to do that. And that's why this urban renewal and the redevelopment of that waterfront property is so important. So but we thank you for underscoring that. Thank you for the mention of the Butler property. You know, we'll just keep working on all of it. And again, thank you for being as engaged as you are, Pat.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Have a good evening.
Yes, you too.
All right. Let's move on to item eight A. This is the Consent Calendar. If we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Consent Calendar.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the Consent Calendar passes. All right. I mentioned council business earlier. Does anybody have anything else to add? Oh, all right. That that means adjourn. So anyway, that's seven eighteen for whoever's counting, and don't expect this to happen every time, folks. This is this is just happy twenty twenty-two. And for all of you who haven't heard this earlier, I'll say it again. This is the year of the tiger. So as we know, that means a lot. That's significant for Newburgh. So go Tigers. All right. And otherwise, we'll be back here on the eighteenth for our next edition of Newburgh City Council. Thank you.